Okay. If we could call this regular meeting to order, today's date is Monday, May 6, 2024. Mrs. Lowe, would you lead us in the House of Lords, please?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Stewart, do we have any agenda adjustments?
We do not have any agenda adjustments this evening.
Thank you. We have no personnel student recognitions this evening. There are no items under student discipline. At this time, Mr. Wilson, would you be kind enough to give us a briefing, please? Or Mr. Cogurt.
Yeah.
Either one.
I got other stuff.
He's moral support.
Okay. I could, um, next up. Thank you, sir.
Yep. We got to be here tonight just to talk to you guys. We got some changes that we're working on at the high school level. And just wanted you guys to be aware of them. So as we're doing things to try to benefit our students, our staff, our community, administration as well, to try to alleviate some problems and some hiccups, you guys know what's happening. So when the phone calls start rolling in, as we anticipate they will, uh, because we're having some big changes. So if you look through there, we have prescribed pathways. Those are for us to use in-house for scheduling purposes. Uh, students tracking through our regular coursework, uh, dual credit AP coursework. Trying to make sure that we don't hit problems with having so many staff members or so low staff members. We don't want our kids to hit the ceiling too fast and then they can't fall backwards. Okay? So that's a big challenge for us right now building the master schedule. For example, if you were in our building and you were talking master schedule with me, we'd be talking about English right now. Uh, juniors taking the English 101 class, then going into their senior year, taking the dual credit English Lit, the 207, 208, that's a sophomore level English class. If there would be ever any problems with that class, and traditionally in college you'd be able to drop that class and things, you couldn't drop it at the high school level because you can't go backwards. So it kind of really sticks them to where if they would have trouble and want to go to a regular English class, there's no place to move them to. So just trying to look at those things to where we can still get those advanced pathway students, the credits that they want and what we want them to have, uh, just kind of laying it out instead of, here's all the dual credit offerings, take them as you will, here's what we're kind of guiding you towards your junior year, your senior year, and then if you have any available spots, here's what you can take online through our virtual stuff. Uh, so that's what you're looking at there. And it's just trying to track it better to where with your building our schedule, you have eight periods. We have nine dual credit or honors offerings, 11 through 12. Doesn't really fit into there. Of course, we try to avoid scheduling conflicts with common plan times for math and English, uh, knowing where there's a, there's a slowdown in the schedule, like banned eighth period, offering something eighth period where we can't get the kids into. So it limits when we can offer those. And when they're buttoned up against each other, you can't get them all the way through. With this method, or what we're hoping with this method of presenting it and kind of laying it out as an 11th and 12th grade guide, you'd be able to take those courses. They should not conflict with your schedules in the two years, unless they would be a tri-county student or a CTE completer, and that's, you know, a whole different animal. But they would be able to leave Lewis County High School, taking most of those classes, close to 40 hours. And that's separate from what they would take online with a facilitator. Those are actually in the schedule, in the master schedule, taken up a block, has a teacher in the room with them. So that's what we're trying to do with those documents that you see before there. Uh, the second handout you have there is the grading policy. And you see it's got draft on it because we're still working. We've had one curriculum meeting with the teachers trying to go through things. We're not trying to change how our teachers are doing things. Uh, you know, as a teacher, once you're stuck in what you, what you know, what you do, it's how you work. We're just trying to provide consistency so that everybody's using about the same scale. Uh, the scale doesn't change, but the category is good. So we're trying to really use our PBIS part to increase student attendance, to have some of a few projects and grades kind of tied to that. But basically, a teacher will still be able to do everything they've always done. But when they go to enter it in the grading system in school, they'll have certain places to put it so that it's common across the board. What you get with high school is you get 50 teachers that all teach a different subject at a different time. It's, it's hard for administration to answer those phone calls, and it's hard for parents to, if they have multiple kids in the building, they have different grading scales for different periods, for different things. This is a consistent way that our teachers can still do everything that they want to do on their own, but then put it kind of into a system that everybody's using. So it provides consistency. That helps with onboarding of new staff, with older staff. It helps with, like I said, when a parent calls in and has multiple kids in the building, or a grandparent calls in with multiple kids in the building, everybody will be able to speak the same language. What's happened in the room is different, obviously, because it's different teachers, different personalities, but a consistent scheme kind of across the plan. And then that last one's probably the most important one that you're going to look at. Uh, if we got a lot, you know, I'm, you're getting it first. Our teachers haven't seen it yet. So you guys are getting it first, and that's a cell phone policy at Lewis County High School. So that is taken partly from Robert C. Byrd around our area, County Schools, Cap'n Learning Online, uh, just different pieces that we wanted to mold and use. We have to have something at our high school. The cell phone usage is a problem. Yes, I know they can be used for academic reasons at times, uh, but we're not seeing that. You know, we're seeing kids meeting up in bathrooms, in commons areas that don't have schedules at the same time. They don't eat lunch at the same time. You know, theoretically speaking, other than the class change, they should never be around each other. But they're still meeting up in bathrooms where we have problems. So, you know, with between just the discipline side of it, information getting out, sometimes you guys are calling us before we're even talking to the student. Parents are calling us before we're talking to the student. So it's a hindrance to the day and it does disrupt the day. So to have a plan in place, our teachers are in full support of a plan. Uh, it's detailed. It lists the offenses, one through five. It lists, if you're a teacher, it says exactly what you're going to do, it's exactly how you're going to put it in, and exactly how the administrative team is going to respond. So it takes out the whole guessing game, that every parent would look at that and understand, every teacher would understand, every student administrator, everybody would understand. Uh, like I said, you're getting that before anybody else to look over. We're not looking for anything to really go into effect until the 24, 25 school year. But we have to have, we feel strongly, our teachers feel strongly, that we have to have something in place to combat cell phones. Uh, you can look up, like I said, I was using Cap'n. It was on EduMeetly. You know, the statistics are there to show that if you remove them, you can increase focus. And that, that'll be a good thing for us too. Right from the get-go, as an administrator, we're trying to combat discipline a little bit. And right now, you know, you got, you got every parent, family member, mom, dad are kind of attending school with them on their phones. So when you're talking to a student and you hear a voice come out of a pocket, that's difficult. It just makes our job a little bit harder. So those are some big changes that we're really trying to streamline so that when you come to Lewis County High School as a student, you know you're going to get the education that you truly want. You're going to get what you need. You're going to get what you, what makes you come to school. And it's a consistent basis because the turnover rate with education right now in teachers is high. So we want to have something in place to where when we get someone new into the building, we have all this structure in place of where they really feel supported and they want to keep coming to Lewis County High School and making a difference. And I'll probably see you guys in another month when we, when I approach and talk about the change to the minute-by-minute schedule. Because we're working on that a little bit right now. Just trying to smooth and narrow it out as many things as possible, but wanted to get this stuff to you guys so that if people ask you, you have something to reference. And always feel free to call us. If you have any questions. I know there's a lot there. I don't mean to throw it all at you at once, but, you know, we are trying to get some movement. Kind of passionate about it right now, at the end of the year, with everything else going.
But have you had any feedback on what happens when the student says, but the teacher's on their, their cell phone all period long?
Yep. Well, that's, that's on us as administrators. We have to combat that problem one by one. So.
And how you were going to address that?
Got to lead by example. So, but, I mean, right now, that's a start.
Yeah.
Is have something in place that everybody is consistent with.
So it was a model policy, quasi-model policy, policy taken from Byrd and what was the other school district?
Berkeley County.
Berkeley County.
Berkeley County is where a lot of that document kind of originated from. Just some of the terminology didn't apply to what we do because of trying to keep everything that we do in line with Word docs. Uh, obviously, as an administrator, we'd like to see an ISS level built in there, but not knowing what we don't know yet. Planning, we can always back it up. But it, it falls right in with what Byrd's going with their first through four offenses. They had great success. They had a lot of trial tribulations at the beginning because it was new. But getting it to you guys now, getting our teachers to accept it, then we can start pushing the word out over the summer and do some PR work through social media so everyone knows what's in store. But I mean, for discipline, school safety, and focus. Once, if we handle the first two, we can get some focus and get some, hopefully, academic stuff moving again.
Mr. Wilson, any add?
Well, I was just thinking, you said focus several times, and focus brings achievement. If you're keeping the kids on path to what they're supposed to do, we're hoping achievement increases as well.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. I don't believe we have any delegations this evening. Uh, at this time, Ms. Palmer, would you chat with us a bit, please?
Yeah, sure thing. All right. Well, that's warming up. I got some handouts.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks for having me today. Um, I used to kind of give quarterly updates. So, you know, if you're willing and able, maybe I'll start doing that again. Um, so I wanted to share with you all just some general updates from the Family Resource Network. Um, in case you're not familiar, we're right across the street in the old gifted building. Um, we call it our work home. And, um, so I've given you guys some handouts of some things that we have upcoming. But first, I want to tell you just a little bit about the FRN in general. Uh, we have more than 50 programs and projects. About half of those are with Lewis County Schools. One of the things that we're most known for is the Yellow Click Resource Guide that you guys have. And so we have a full-time resource coordinator now, and her full-time job is sourcing resources for folks throughout the community. Um, that means that this resource guide is also updated every month. And we also have a larger electronic resource guide online that has about 3,000 resources attached to it. So a lot of times when we're serving families, the number one thing we can do is connect them to resources because resources are useless if the families don't know that they are. Um, if you want to look at this colorful handout, um, this one just gives kind of an overview of um, this one just gives kind of an overview of what does the FRN do. So I get this question a lot. Um, a lot of folks associate the FRN with the food pantry because that's what they can see. When you see a line, clear out the door. And the parking lot full of cars and clear down the street, that's kind of what you associate. So our food pantry services have grown a lot. Um, over the past seven years, we have gone from, uh, serving like a hundred and twenty-five families a month to serving like about twelve hundred Lewis County units a month. Um, so the, the need has really grown. Um, there are a few reasons for that, which we don't have enough time to talk about today. Um, but primarily, we know the socioeconomic situation in Lewis County, combined with the number of kiddos who are living with someone that's not a biological parent. Those are the folks that we're primarily seeing with the food pantry. About ten percent of folks we see are single seniors that live on their own, so. Oh, that's not the last, is it?
Sorry, I don't know what's left.
It's okay. We have been tested it today. Yeah.
Our CTE version.
Okay. We literally just said today, we might need to upgrade this thing soon.
I really did.
Literally, you just said that. Here's Exhibit A. So in general, um, we do have eight feeding programs, and so that includes the food pantry. Specific to Lewis County Schools, what that includes is the Backpack Buddies Weekend Feeding Program. So the most students that that has served in a week is three hundred and seventy students. And so that looks like lots of collaboration with faith-based organizations across the community who pack snack packs for us. And those snack packs go home with kiddos, they go home with head start on Thursday because they don't have school Friday, and they go home with all the other school students on Friday for the weekend. And then it includes one breakfast, one lunch, one snack type item for both Saturday and Sunday. So, um, to come up with that list of who gets Backpack Buddies, we essentially take the entire communities and schools caseload. And we also add to that list anybody who has been identified by a bus driver or a school secretary or communities and schools, or anybody who just says, hey, we could use a little bit of help on the weekends with food. Um, so other than food, we do a whole lot of things. Um, we are responsible for Try This West Virginia. It provides lots of mini-grants across the state of West Virginia. Some of those mini-grants in Lewis County look like, um, the Community Garden at the High Rise. Um, it originally built the Community Garden at Leading Creek School. Um, the Community Garden at Jane Lou, the Disneymore. Um, as well as a walking program that's facilitated by Mon Health for its employees. And anybody under the age of eighteen that comes in can actually get a pedometer to wear or, you know, to encourage ten thousand steps in a day. Um, family support services are what we're most known for, the direct services. Um, emergency food, um, food orders, a million calls from communities and schools every week that looks like, hey, we have somebody who's, um, experiencing homelessness. We have a teenager living in their car. We have a single grandma with three grandkids who needs X, Y, and Z. Uh, we get probably ten phone calls a week about beds. Um, so if anybody knows Greg St. Clair, he's a good one. Um, he's installed last year a hundred and twelve beds to Lewis County kids through the Sleep in Heavenly Peace, um, program. And so we partner with that to provide bedding, supplies, help connect volunteers, um, source mattresses, those types of things. So you know the cost of everything's outrageous. And so the cost of doing a bed now is almost twice what it was, um, like three years ago.
You asked Greg how many pillows he can stuff in an automobile.
Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right. Um, so we get lots of calls about, uh, basic needs. So last year, just between the middle school, high school, and the community, we did almost two thousand hygiene packs. That looks like single-use hygiene items that are needed, feminine hygiene items, full-size hygiene items for use by families. And so we, um, we work really close with communities and schools to try to keep some of those types of things in the school so that they're not making lots of trips to the FRN and we're not making lots of trips to them. That looks like clothing, food, snacks for kids to eat at school, snacks for them to take home. Um, lots of resource provision for things. So, um, I always say, anything that you can think of, any problem that you might come across, I love really like outside-the-box calls of our random things. Um, but we, we work really hard for anybody who calls us, if that's a service provider, if that's a counselor, if that's a school nurse, if that's somebody from here, if that's a staff member of Lewis County Schools, whoever it is. We basically start from, we don't need to know what happened over the past five years. We need to know what's going on right now and how can we support you in that. Um, we have recently started a new program called Parent Resource Navigation. Um, it is through the Court Improvement Program. I have learned more about the court system in the past twelve years than I ever cared to know, and I hope that I forget most of it. Um, but basically, that program is something that I have really tried to bring to Lewis County my entire time at the FRN, and we have finally done it, and it has been a lot harder than we anticipated. Um, that person works directly with families who have an open court case. So an open CPS case, they are, um, have an open case in court. And so our Parent Resource Navigator does a little bit more than what we would generally do if a parent just calls to the FRN and says, I need X, Y, and Z. She actually goes to MDT meetings, she goes to court hearings, she goes to court days and really supports the family in whatever it is that they need. That could look like a million different things. That could look like, um, support if they want to voluntarily terminate their rights. That could look like support for the foster family where a kiddo is going to go. That could look like support for a grandfamily or a kinship family, which to be a kinship family, you don't even have to be family, you can just be West Virginia neighbor family. Um, so any type of support that that family needs, our Parent Resource Navigator is there to provide. Um, we do lots of beds with that program too. Because anytime there's an emergency removal, the FRN is one of the first three calls that's made. And so we provide lots of air beds and pajamas and backpacks for school the next day. Um, situational referrals. Um, the homelessness issue in Lewis County is, um, I would not say crisis levels, but we're getting there. Um, so homeless in our definition is much different than Lewis County Schools' definition of homeless. Um, you know, for us, homelessness means that you don't have a safe place to sleep that night. If someone is couch surfing or they have a safe place to sleep, they're not necessarily considered homeless. Um, and as you can imagine, that comes with lots of other, uh, very intricate details surrounding substance use disorder and severe mental illness and lack of treatment and lack of accessibility and lots of other things that we don't have time to address today. Um, but specifically with students, we work surrounding homelessness, um, primarily with teens. Um, so this looks like, it used to look like seventeen, almost eighteen-year-olds, and now this looks like cleared out to middle schoolers, um, who, uh, aren't staying at home for whatever reason, a million different reasons. And so they could be staying in their car, they could be staying with a relative, they could be staying with a friend. Um, we have experienced many times kiddos at risk of sleeping outside because they literally don't have a place to go. This is the hardest and most time-consuming thing that we do on a day-to-day basis for Lewis County School students is trying to source safe places for people to stay. Um, we don't have short-term housing. We do have a housing crisis here in general. So I'm really happy, uh, just this school year, we have helped four juniors and seniors who are seventeen or eighteen years old, um, find stable housing and kind of get on their feet as much as possible while they're still in school. Most of the time, that's surrounding, um, a teen pregnancy in the home. And so, um, that doesn't, that's not always high schoolers. Um, we're supporting current, um, middle schoolers who, um, who are pregnant and need a lot of resources surrounding that. Um, let's see. Um, a lot of people, you know, I gave you this handout about what does the FRN do because that's the number one question I get, what, what do you guys do all day long? What do you do? Um, what I do all day long is I, um, manage grants. Um, so I do all the boring work and all of our staff. We have, um, twenty-three staff and six full-time volunteers and three part-time volunteers and six AmeriCorps visas. Um, that's across all of our offices. Eleven of those folks sit here at the Lewis County office. We have a secondary Lewis County office that just opened, it's right beside the DHHR. Um, so if you're looking at the DHHR, which is now known as, um, Department of Human Services, so they'll be getting a new sign. If you look to the right of that, our new office is there. Um, so it's not a replacement office, it's extra space. If you've never been in our office across the street, um, come visit sometime and, and it's at max capacity. So we have opened a classroom, a success closet, and some other things, secondary location. We also have satellite offices in, um, Buchanan, Clarksville, and Wallback. And so those, um, ancillary offices are for our Parents as Teachers program. Um, our primary office, of course, is here. Um, I wanted to tell you a little bit about some of the things we've done with Lewis County Schools in the past. So my favorite part about working at the Family Resource Network is that we get to work on whatever the issue is right then. Um, you know, it's really, you need to be in an organization that can be nimble to whatever your community needs. And so, you know, that was the case during COVID. Um, when school was called off on, I think it was a Friday, um, we literally met with every single cook and every single bus driver in Lewis County Schools on that following Monday. Every single person that I called showed up. And for two straight weeks, we cooked every bit of food out of all of Lewis County Schools and delivered every bit of food out of Lewis County Schools to the tune of fifty thousand meals. Um, I hope we never have to do that again. And also, it was really amazing, and one of the things that keeps me in West Virginia is the community. There has never been not one single time that we have needed something where we reach out and the person says no. The answer might be not yet, or is there something else I can do? But the answer is never no, it's always yes. Um, summer food, so for many years, we have facilitated summer food in Lewis County. Uh, it looks a little bit different now because of the federal mandates surrounding, uh, summer food and what that looks like now versus what it used to look like. Um, but the summer food bus and summer food volunteers, that was all facilitated by the FRN. Um, we talked a little bit about Parent Resource Navigation. Um, Parents as Teachers is our biggest program by far. It's what I call good old-fashioned parenting support. Um, it is available to absolutely anybody not based on income, who is pregnant or has a kiddo under five. This is one of the most important programs that we have because we cannot wait until kids enter kindergarten to have a first look at them. If we can enter a family's home when they're pregnant or have an infant, um, this is an evidence-based international model that focuses on school readiness and focuses on literacy. And so we know lots of data to back up over the thirty-plus years of Parents as Teachers that if we can enter the home early, outcomes are better upon entrance of kindergarten, let alone exiting kindergarten. Uh, we did talk about Backpack Buddies. So one thing I didn't mention about Backpack Buddies is it is partially funded by Lewis County Schools, if you didn't know that. Um, Lewis County Schools since, um, all school districts are allowed to apply for Backpack Buddies feeding money each year. And so for the past few years, Lewis County gets between twenty and twenty-two thousand dollars a school year. And so that, that pot of money is used on Backpack Buddies. The total amount of money that we spend on Backpack Buddies last, last school year was like around forty-two thousand dollars. So around like fifty percent of that is funded by Lewis County Schools, and then we fundraise and get donations for the other fifty percent. Okay, so I gave you guys some flyers of some upcoming things that are going on. Um, these are just some things happening over the next few months. We facilitate healthy grandfamilies in Lewis County, and we have a new class coming up starting this fall. Um, it's a really fun class, set of classes, that is specifically for grandfamilies who are raising grandkids. This doesn't mean that they have ever done, had to have done documentation of any type or legal documents to say that they're the legal guardian. It just means, hey, I'm raising my grandkid and I really need some support. Um, we do these classes once a year. Um, we tried to do them virtually over COVID, which was a miserable failure. And so thank goodness, we have been able to do them in person for the past couple of years again. Um, these cover topics like legal issues. We always have someone from Lewis County Schools present about navigating the school system. I mean, you know, we have grandparents who with birthdays in the forties and fifties with toddlers and with preschoolers and with middle schoolers. And so they just need to ask questions like, hey, if I need to talk to someone about X, Y, and Z, who do I ask that to? And so we cover, um, technology, social media, communication, healthy lifestyles, which could be anything from required vaccinations to enter school to, um, you know, why can't my kid carry cough drops without a, without a note to school? So Healthy Grandfamilies class coming up. Um, we have Play in the Park, so we host Play in the Park all summer long, it's super fun. It's every Wednesday at Lewis County Park during the summer. And we have some, uh, really fun and unique, uh, classes starting. Uh, June fifth is the first one, it's Chicken Day, and we have a chicken that, um, that likes to be walked on a leash. So if you would like to witness that, come to Lewis County Park. Um, so we have lots of, you know, we cover, we try to cover things that are caregiver-child focused, um, easy activities that parents or grandparents can replicate at home. You don't have to spend a hundred dollars a day to go to an event and drive an hour to do something fun. We try to work on activities that even use things that they have at their house or be really imaginative to have fun at home. Um, we also have Circle of Parents. Um, the flyer I gave you is our, was our, um, our upcoming meeting. And Circle of Parents is an evidence-based curriculum that allows caregivers just to get together and talk about things. Um, they get to bring their kids with them. It's been really interesting to see that most of the folks coming are, um, much older grandparents that have really young kids. So we have a couple of grandmothers that attend who are in their eighties, one who has three kiddos under two years old, um, from two sets of grandparents. So it's been really interesting to see the evolution of what Circle of Parents used to look like seven years ago and then what it looks like now is a lot different. A couple of other things we have going on. Uh, Dave, you mentioned the invite to the baby shower. So if anybody's pregnant or has a kiddo under two, we do an annual community baby shower with Broad Street Church. They are amazing. Um, last year, we served almost seventy families, um, who were pregnant or had a kiddo under two. It's a great event. Um, we just sent out the invites for that today, and the theme this year is Under the Sea. Um, all those church ladies fix the best food and do the best decorations for this event. Um, Doll Friday is a, um, it's a new event for us. So May is melanoma awareness month. And one thing that we've done over the past year is Leslie, with our Family Support Center, has installed, um, sunscreen dispensers all across the community. So you'll find them at Butchersville at the Ball Field and at Lewis County Park and by the pool and at all the parks in Lewis County. And so we are actually working on, we're working with Lewis County Park to install a sun shade over part of their play area because there's no shade there. And we're also installing another sunscreen dispenser there. And, um, so Doll Friday is, um, you know, encouraging folks to use sunscreen and be really smart about sun awareness and water safety. And we're almost to the end here. Um, so some of the resources, you know, resource provision is one of the primary things that we do, and that looks like a lot of different things. Um, so May is Mental Health Awareness Month. We have a traveling resource table that's going all across the community right now that's giving out information about mental health and taking really good care of yourself. Um, I get, I'm not sure if I gave a copy of this to you, but I'll follow up, um, with an email with this entire presentation in it, so that you can have it. These, this resource flyer is something that we created specifically for Lewis County Schools. And, um, it is a resources-for-you-feel-good informational infographic. And so the point of this, um, we printed these and laminated them, and they're in all of the bathrooms in middle school and high school and in communal areas. It has helped, um, you know, the ninety-eight suicide crisis life, um, lifeline listed. Um, it has little positive messaging, I can do hard things, you matter. Um, it gives a link to download an app that lets especially teens, um, track their mental wellness every day and what does that look like for me. Um, and so then on the right side is a screenshot of the yellow version of the resource guide that you got. And the one online, I'll be sure to include a link to so that you guys can access that, three thousand resources on there. And then always tell everybody, follow us on Facebook. Um, I can't even remember what we're doing all at once, so please follow us and you can stay updated. Um, we have a lot of fun things going on for, for Mental Health Awareness Month. It's a really wild time in the schools, May, right before the end of school, but we have a few things going on in the schools too, so. All right, I love questions, so ask me something good. I know we went through a lot in a short period of time.
How many employees do you have?
Um, so we have twenty-three. Um, we have six AmeriCorps volunteers that work with Try This West Virginia, uh, six full-time volunteers that work at the food pantry. six full-time volunteers that work at the food pantry and in various other projects, and three part-time volunteers. So 11 of those are at this office.
Is Laura Anderson part of the AmeriCorps here?
She's not. So she, we actually trained her on the AmeriCorps program through Tri-This West Virginia. And so she worked with us for a year and learned all about AmeriCorps programs. And then she transitioned to the city of Weston, and she's going to run the AmeriCorps program there.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, I'm proud to talk about it anytime.
I noticed out into my buildings out there, y'all had tractor trailer unloading food and stuff.
Oh, yeah, yes.
They do a real nice job.
Yeah.
They really do.
Yeah, so the third Tuesday of each month, about 8:30, if you ever want to witness this, it's a, there's some bad words.
They took a lot, they took, they took a lot of, a lot of food, I noticed, was coming out of that tractor trailer.
A lot.
Very, very well organized.
Yeah, so the Mount near Food Bank truck, contrary to popular belief, does not come from the Lewis County location. It comes, everything comes from Gasaway. The Lewis County location is just their overage storage. And so tractor trailer backs in about 8:30 a.m. We have to wait to the end to get unloaded because our order is by far the biggest of anybody in Lewis County, so it's at the front of the truck. And so all of that gets loaded onto a truck and trailer, and then it gets backed into those teeny little steps at the building across the way. And we pallet jacket off the trailer, inventory it, and put it away every month to the tune of 20,000 pounds of food.
Wow, God bless you.
If, if you, if you haven't been in the F R N, go, go visit and wander around.
Yeah, please come anytime.
Have you, have any, have you been inside?
One time.
Now, it's, it's one of our buildings.
It is, yes.
Yeah, it's, it belongs to Lewis County Schools. It's actually one of our newer buildings in the county, if you, if you really want to think about it.
Yeah.
So what's some issues with the building and, and your needs?
Well, our needs right now are primarily the door lock. So if, if I get locked in or out of the building one more time, you're going to see me cry real tears. We have, we have really struggled with the door lock for a long time. I just messaged Larry Moody today, and he came and took another look at it. He reworked the lock again. But I said, Mr. Moody, if we have to see each other over this lock one more time, I'm just having you replace the entire door. It has been a struggle for us to get things taken care of in a timely fashion, which means a lot of times we just try to do it ourselves. But also, I never want to overstep the bounds of our agreements. And we also have done things voluntarily. So I sent you that every spring, I send the board an update that says, hey, these are all the things we've done to the building. Recently, that has looked like replacing ceiling tiles, replacing floor tiles. We replaced all of the lights in the building with LED lights, which cut down our electric bill by like 90-some dollars a month, by the way. We have done a lot of work outside, replaced the handrail. Of course, a couple of years ago, we put on that little roof, so, so yes.
The awning has really.
It's helped so much. Yeah, it's helped so much. And we really desperately want to get back to letting folks come inside. It's really important to me that folks can choose their own items from the food pantry and have autonomy to choose things for themselves. We're just not there yet. You know, we've had 40-some pantry clients die of COVID. Our food pantry director is almost 80 years old. So we just have to be super careful, you know? But it's been, it's been a game changer having that awning, yes. Yes, the door lock is our biggest issue. I am forever going to ask if there are plans to move the vault so that we can have access to that extra space. I don't know if that's even been something that's been discussed recently.
And some, some of the board members may not be aware of what you're talking about.
Okay, so in the building, if you're looking at the front of the building where the community art is, which we didn't even get to talk about, the community arts by Reggie Hopper, it's actually getting ready to transition to a new art piece in July. If you're looking where the community art is on that side of the building, Lewis County School vault of documents, I was told, are more than 40 years old, are stored in there. We do not have access to it from the outside or the inside. The only way to access it is from the inside. And so when we originally moved in, we were told the plans were being made to move the vault so that we could access that space. And here we are, I don't know, six or seven years later. And so we could really use that space. If there ever comes the opportunity to move those vault documents out, we are in desperate need of space.
Okay, and, and also in the email you sent, you mentioned something about some problems with the roof?
We have had forever problems with the roof. It leaks like a literal sieve. So part of our workspace inside is unusable because it's leaked on that space so many times. We just cannot ruin one more set of anything. And so in the back of our building, there's one space that we don't use, and we have ceiling tiles out because the roof really leaks. It doesn't leak all the time, but it leaks probably eight or 10 times a year, and it like pours in. So we have offered, we are even willing to do part of the, you know, find part of the roof replacement. We just cannot forever continue to deal with leaking roofs. And on all my days off, when it rains, I'm coming in here to check and see if it leaked and all these types of things.
Have, have you had any, anyone maybe suggest what they think the problem might be? Because it's only certain parts of the roof, not the whole roof?
Well, no, other than that, obviously, it's collecting somewhere and then leaking all at once. So maintenance has come and looked at it, I don't know, dozens of times. And they've put some caulk up there and done some other things, but, you know, it still leaks.
You're talking about Lewis County or, or maintenance?
Yes, yeah. You know, and in their defense, they're like, we're not roofers. And I'm like, wow, I'm not a roofer either. But we've got to do something, and we're willing to take on part of the cost. So if ever, you know, if you want to have a discussion about that, I'm happy to because I just want to get it taken care of.
Well, you do an awful good job, y'all. I've heard good things about you all over there.
Good, I appreciate it. I'm extremely proud of it.
Helps a lot of people.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from April 10th and April 16th, board meetings?
Motion.
Go ahead.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, say no. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thank you. Do I have a motion to?
I'm assuming Phyllis seconded.
She did.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the following consent agenda in its entirety as follows? Out-of-state meeting field trips request, number one, Alex Valiant Fisher, eighth grade reward trip to Kennywood Park, West Mifflin, Pennsylvania, May 17, school-funded. Number two, Sarah Lowe and Timothy Miller, L C H S, F B L A National Leadership Conference in Orlando, Florida, June 27th through June 3rd. This is of 2024.
July 3rd.
I'm sorry, July, correct? Thank you, corrected. Dr. Stewart, do I? Hit B, you have to do it on it. Also, B, use of, of buildings and grounds. Sean Smith, Sean Smith Group use of R L B M S Gym for basketball Thursdays, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. May 7th, 2024, through June 30th, 2024, when available. Will work around school and youth activities pending insurance. Number two, Gary Stout and Sean Moran, L C Girls Basketball, use of L C H, L C H S Gym, May 13, 2024, through June 30, 2024, pending insurance. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second a motion.
Any discussions?
Yes, actually, there is. We have three additional teachers from Robert Upland Middle School that will be attending the Kennywood trip. Their paperwork just does not come through yet, so they will be on the next agenda. But I want you to know that Julie McCarty, Tammy Laddie, and Stephanie Heer will be added to that list.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. The ayes have it. Moving on to finance. Do I have a motion to approve the payroll payment of bills in the amount of $1,419,916.31?
Definitely.
Second.
Any discussions? None heard? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Continue under finance, do I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 pay schedule?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Thirdly, do I have a motion to employ Mariah Richards as treasurer for Lewis County Schools effective July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025?
Make a motion.
Motion by Johnny, seconded by Phyllis. Any discussion?
This item is on the agenda. This is part of legislation where the treasurer must be approved every year. So we wanted to go ahead and get that on there. So it's just a.
Formality.
Formality.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Okay, Gary's 5-0. At this point, we're going to move on to personnel. And if we may, I'd like to request an executive session to discuss Personnel Agenda Number 12. Do I have a motion to go in the executive session under Western New Code 69A and 4 to discuss Personnel 12 of the Personnel Agenda? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second. Motion by Johnny, seconded by Dave. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. This time it is. 6:46. 6:46.
Section one, accept the following resignations and retirements. A, Rebecca Stansberry, resignation counselor Lewis County High School effective June 30, 2024. B, Gerald Paul, retirement supervisor of transportation effective June 30, 2024. C, Larry J. Bush, Jr., resignation, head wrestling coach Lewis County High School effective May 3, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero.
Section two, consider and approve the following requests. A, Gerald Paul, approved medical leave of absence using sick days, May 6, 2024 through June 30, 2024. B, Amy Gosa, approved unpaid medical leave of absence and donated sick days, March 15, 2024 through June 30, 2024. Days will be used as needed. C, Millie Metzger, approved unpaid leave of absence, April 25, 2024 through June 1, 2024. Days will be used as needed.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by David, second by Michael. Do I have any discussions? None heard, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Section three, please employ the following professional personnel. D, Rebecca Stansberry, substitute teacher, Lewis County Schools, effective July 1, 2024. G, Caleb Belt, itinerant special education teacher, Peterson Central and Roanoke Elementary Schools, effective for the 24-25 school year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by David, second by John. Correct myself, motion by Mike, second by John. Any discussions? None heard, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Section four, please employ the following service personnel. B, Angela Messenger, day-to-day substitute aide, Lewis County Schools, effective May 8, 2024, pending background check. D, Helen Howe, day-to-day substitute bus operator, Lewis County Schools, effective May 15, 2024, pending certification. F, Billy Holman, cook, Lewis County High School, effective for the 24-25 school year. G, Karla Carruthers, halftime cook, Lewis County High School, effective the 24-25 school year. H, Sandra Blake, cafeteria manager, cook, Robert Allen Middle School, effective the 24-25 school year. I, Kristy Gay, success act, ECATA, Jay Lou elementary school, effective the 24-25 school year. J, Erica Weaver, ECAT aide, Jay Lou Elementary School, effective the 24-25 school year. K, Edward Brightbill, long-term temporary bus operator, Lewis County Schools, effective May 8, 2024. L, Heather Montgomery, secretary, Robert Allen Middle School, effective the 24-25 school year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Johnny. Any discussions? All in favor signify by signing, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Motion carries five zero.
Let's get down to section six, employ the following professional extracurricular personnel. C, Johanna Coker, wellness coordinator, Lewis County High School, effective the 23-24 school year.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? I say five zero.
Section seven, employ the following service extracurricular personnel. B, Charles Kraft, long-term temporary West Virginia Guidepost Grant, bus operator, Lewis County Schools, effective May 8, 2024. C, Robert Gross, long-term temporary shuttle run bus operator, Lewis County Schools, effective May 8, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mike, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Phyllis. Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay?
Section eight, approve the following parent community volunteers for the 23-24 school year. Lewis County High School, Philip Bailey, Scott Villers. Roanoke Elementary School, Philip Bailey, Shelby Bailey, Megan Caton. Robert Allen Middle School, Philip Bailey, Shelley Bailey.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Dave, second.
Second.
Second by Johnny. Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Do we have any facility updates?
The only thing that I want to share under facilities and construction updates is Wednesday I will be going to Charleston to accept our SBA grant for our MIP project in replacing HVAC at Peterson.
Okay. Next on the agenda, do I have a motion to advance the following policies to the second reading? And I will, at this time, read all the policies, correct Dr. Stewart?
Yeah, I think they would like to pull number seventeen.
Okay.
And do that one separately.
Yes ma'am. Following policies. Zero one zero zero definitions. Number two, twelve forty, evaluation of the superintendent. Number three, twenty-four thirty-two, driver education. Number four, twenty-four fifty-two, extended learning opportunities. Number five, thirty-one twenty point zero eight, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. Number six, thirty-one twenty point eleven, athletic trainer. Number seven, thirty-one twenty-two point zero one, drug-free workplace. Number eight, thirty-five thirty-one, unauthorized work stoppage. Number nine, forty-one fifteen, job descriptions. Number ten, forty-one twenty zero four, employment of substitutes. Number eleven, forty-one twenty zero eight point zero eight, employment of personnel for extracurricular activities. Number twelve, forty-one twelve point zero one, drug-free workplace. Number thirteen, forty-one twenty-five, competency for testing for service personnel. Number fourteen, forty-two forty-two, service personnel staff development. Number fifteen, forty-five thirty-one, unauthorized work stoppage. Number sixteen, fifty-one eleven, eligibility of resident non-resident students for enrollment. Number eighteen, fifty-one thirteen, open enrollment for non-resident students. Number nineteen, fifty-one thirty, withdrawal from school. Number twenty, fifty-one forty, motor vehicle driver license restrictions. Number twenty-one, fifty-two hundred, attendance. Number twenty-two, fifty-three thirty, use of medications. Number twenty-three, fifty-three thirty point zero two, self-administered medication and epinephrine use. Number twenty-four, fifty-three thirty-one, administration of opioid antagonist. Number twenty-five, fifty-three thirty-five, care of students with chronic health conditions. Number twenty-six, fifty-five hundred, student code of conduct. Number twenty-seven, fifty-six hundred, student discipline. Number twenty-eight, sixty-one fourteen, cost principal spending federal funds. Number twenty-nine, sixty-three twenty, purchases. Number thirty, sixty-five twenty, payroll deductions. Number thirty-one, sixty-eight hundred, system of accounting. Number thirty-two, seventy-four fifty, property inventory. Number thirty-three, seventy-four fifty-five, accounting system for capital assets. Number thirty-four, eighty-three forty, letters of reference. Number thirty-five, eighty-four oh five point zero one, indoor air quality. Number thirty-six, eighty-six hundred point zero four, bus operator certification. Number thirty-seven, ninety-two seventy, home instruction. And number thirty-eight, ninety-five zero five, charter schools. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Johnny. Any discussions? None heard, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? And we will handle number seventeen, fifty-one twelve, entrance requirements. Do I have a motion to approve?
Aye. You can have a motion before you can...
Yeah, make a motion.
Before you can have a discussion.
Motion by Dave, second. Second by Johnny. Or second by Phyllis. Discussions?
Yeah, I would like to remove the language, chronological age shall be the sole determining factor for admission of resident children into kindergarten. And replace it with, the board may admit to kindergarten such children as may be ineligible by reason of age, but demonstrate the ability and need to undertake a program of education. I think we all understand that children develop at different rates of speed and when you have a specific date, sometimes some children are more mature, more educationally advanced, and we should allow them to start school.
Do you believe that's reasonable?
Difference between graduating an eighteen or nineteen-year-old.
Yes. So to modify the language?
Yes. So they could modify the motion to include the updated language?
Okay.
Are you willing to?
Yes.
Phyllis, are you willing to modify that motion?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed nay? Okay. Moving on. Reports and discussions.
That's the shuttle activity bus run report, it's on page one ninety-six in your packet.
Anybody have any questions or discussions needed about the shuttle run? Nothing good. Okay. Dr. Stewart, any updates?
I have no updates tonight.
Mike, do you have anything?
Yes, Fred Everly graduation will be at the Barber County Fairgrounds on the, I believe it's the fifteenth of May. At, what's it, six o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. At seven o'clock. So, very nice facility over there and every year the graduation goes from Lewis County to Barber County to after County, so that's on the fifteenth, seven o'clock.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Dave?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. Johnny?
Teacher appreciation week, I think this week, so we need to be cognizant of that and I just want to thank Larry Bush for his wrestling. The guy did a great job with his program, not only with the wrestling, but community-minded and want to thank Larry J. Bush for all he did, did a great job.
Phyllis?
Nothing, excuse me, thank you.
I don't have anything either. The date of our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, at six PM at the Administration Building. We have a reception to recognize twenty-three to twenty-four retirees at five thirty PM, which begins for our regular meeting if folks can be in attendance. Do I have a motion?
Here at the board office?
Yes.
We will also be recognizing our teachers of the year and service personnel of the year at that five twenty-eight meeting.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?